Lexi Murphy. Here. We have four of them, thank you. And we have no guests. Needs to sign in and approve the agenda. Do you have any additions or corrections, deletions, or otherwise? I'll make motion to approve the agenda. Carlson made motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Jean to approve the agenda for tonight, which is quite limited in scope. Do we have any other questions regarding the agenda before approving? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, say nay. So ayes, motion carries. First order of business is personnel updates. You have any comments?
Go ahead.
We interviewed, I think, around six people. And we got it down to between two and three, but we only did a second interview on two. And what we sent out to you, we gave to you guys, we put them number one and number two, so that we know who we're talking about. And I did that by alphabet, so it's really easy to remember. Anyhow, and all the people we interviewed, we felt were decent. I mean, a lot of them don't have anything in actual working in an accounting place or anything. There was one that kind of did, but some of it like that wasn't, didn't go the best. So, but other than that, a lot of them had more medical than bookkeeping in our kind, which I said there's nothing wrong with that because they went to school for that also. And I'm guessing they would be able to do the job, hopefully. I don't think we had anybody that, of these two for sure, that we felt couldn't take care of it or couldn't do it. We did have Michelle sit in on those two and see, because she's the one that will be working with them. And kind of, she's kind of got a thought on what she feels. And so I guess you guys looked them over. You have any questions or whatever? Ask us, check with us, whatever you want to think.
What about that one that I asked you about today?
That's the one, that's why I gave you that other deal, but that wouldn't be any process or any problem right now. And if you want to talk about that one, I think we should call it number three, just so we all know what we're doing. Without me knowing anything.
Well, you know, I had some time to look them over. I didn't have a lot of time this weekend. Of course, we had graduation and all of that.
Right.
Didn't get them soon enough to be able to go through them all, but I went, I looked at the candidates, one and two, looked at that. One has, one is, has a degree in radiology technology. The other one has a associate's degree in coding and transcription.
Like I said, we had a lot of.
There's a third, there's a third one here that I picked out that has a bachelor's degree in business management.
Right.
And that's not one of the two choices.
Well, we.
Well, that's, that's just a degree straight out of college, okay? What experience do you have when you come out of college and you have a BA in business? Did you interview her and ask her that?
No, you guys interviewed.
Yeah, that's why we went with the other two.
And I'm saying that.
We thought she was a great candidate.
Yes.
But there's also an nepotism thing here. The very last one says unrelated persons living together.
And they're not living together.
Yes, they are, they're living.
Somebody living together.
Is your son living with her?
Yes, but my son doesn't work here.
No, but.
Right, and I'm not married.
Well, I don't care, do whatever you want.
Right, they're not, they're not, he's not working here, living.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine. I'm just saying.
That's what that would mean.
That's, we had a hard time, three in the top four, there was some sort of nepotism kind of involved, and that's what we had a problem with.
You're going to have that in a small town.
Yes, but you, but there's a policy.
But we can always.
We have a policy, so we have.
Okay, so.
We can always update that, like, how many people.
Well, it says we can go over it.
Right.
It says the council here has accepted my prior approval of the city council.
Right.
And at this point, yes, number three is clear. In time, that can change. I mean, I think that's kind of the thought.
See, how did you, how did you find out about this candidate?
I asked for the applications.
Nobody came to you and told you, complained about him, or?
No, I asked for the applications and this afternoon, and Michelle provided me with the applications.
Oh, you just got them today?
Yep. I had the, I had the two candidates that you gave me.
Last night.
And then I followed Michelle and asked her if she could email me the rest of the applications, and she did.
So we could do this, every time you chose somebody, I could have came in and gotten all the applications everybody?
Sure. Yeah, that's.
I didn't do that because I felt.
You can, as a council member, you can ask for any record that the city, the city has.
That's fine.
Yes.
So, but that was one of the reasons that we had some problems with number three. Not problems with her specifically, but if they end up getting married and stuff, then, then we're working together that way. I don't know if that would be an issue. I don't think Michelle does either, but it's, it's something that we thought was worth talking about.
I would, I wouldn't even think that's, that would be a.
Problem?
I don't, I wouldn't even think that that would be one of the considerations. The biggest thing that I see that would be the benefit to the city would be that this person has a bachelor's degree in business management.
Do you think somebody with a bachelor's degree in business management would want to stick around here and make this lower wage?
I can't say that about this person, but do you think?
That's what I was looking at. That's what, that's what I was looking at, Steve. I was looking at, you know, is this a stepping stone until you find something that's better?
It probably could be, yes. And possibly not.
Yeah, and you wouldn't put it past her.
You don't.
You wouldn't feel bad if she said that.
You don't know until you try. It, and we've tried and we.
Look at these ones making.
You said, you said, you said. You, you recall they wanted to be fired, the guy.
They what?
Well, they say, oh, never mind. That's too old for me.
He supervised, right?
That's not what we're talking about.
No, but I'm talking about.
We had multiple conversations if we can try to decide who's talking and has the floor, that would be great, gets where everyone else can hear. So would you two like to elaborate or want you to say? She answered my question. Well, because she wanted to know about the salaries for the other two that we're going to have, that were making more. And I said, we told them what we would probably be starting at. We didn't want anybody feeling that they were going to start at whatever wage they put on their app. Do we want to discuss compensation regardless of candidate then? That would be something perhaps we have the ability to come to alignment on? We said between eighteen or nineteen. We felt Michelle started at nineteen and we didn't feel we should go over her. We felt that was fair to her and for this person starting out, learning a whole new job, because none of them have ever, well, the one has had some experience working book, bookkeeping and stuff, but the other two, even number three hasn't, I don't think worked in an office anyplace that I'm seeing.
So.
Yeah, but that was even at a camp like, wasn't it?
So since we're on the subject of salary, can I comment on that? You have candidate one put on the application a desired salary of twenty dollars, and that's the one with the associate degree in coding and transcription. Candidate two did not put anything for a desired salary. Candidate, and the other candidate with the bachelor's degree and put down thirty thousand for an desired salary. So.
We talked to him, we told him.
Right, we did. And they were all agreeable.
They're all agreeable.
Yeah, so thirty thousand, I'm, what I'm saying is thirty thousand isn't a lot of money for somebody that has a bachelor's degree starting out in a new.
At eighteen, she'd be making more than that, than thirty.
Way more than that. At eighteen or nineteen, it's around thirty-eight thousand.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's the desired salary that she, this person put on their application.
So your first one should just go down?
We had other people that put a large amount and said, well, I'm shooting for the moon, so.
Right. Yeah, we had somebody that we interviewed wanted fifty, too, and I said.
Maybe that number three, you know, she just came out of school and such, so she'll know stuff, and then maybe she would be able to help with grants and stuff. You know, coming or knowing how to apply or what to look for at numbers or.
Well, I wouldn't even put that on her at this point, because I feel if she learns the basics, Michelle's been here the longest, then she gets that fine job. And contact and stuff.
So all the candidates were agreeable, like with the eighteen?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yep, they all said they, and we told them in six months, that's the way our policy reads, that we can give a raise. If you're happy and they're happy, and we can do that. And plus, once they get out, if they take any classes or schooling, which we have clerk school and stuff, that, you know, we, well, according to that, too. Eighteen fifty, by the way, is thirty-eight thousand, or still thirty-eight thousand.
Yeah, and, and that's like I said, like I said, this is low for what this candidate put on that application.
Somebody could put anything, Steve, though. You know?
Well.
That's what, that's what most of them put said.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not saying we, this person deserves more than the thirty thousand that they put on the application.
Oh, yeah, that's what we just told you, we just told her it'd be eighteen and nineteen.
Yeah.
So that'd be more than that. We didn't say, oh, we're, oh, we're going to hire you because you said thirty thousand, that's what you're going to start at. We never said that.
No, no, that's not what I'm getting at. I'm just, I'm just saying you need to consider. You need to consider.
Them to consider and add a third candidate, the third candidate to dismiss.
Yes, I really, I really think you'd better reconsider this.
Well, like I said, we went back and forth on, and we had Michelle come in with the last two, and we also knew the third candidate was someone that she also was in favor of, but I said, too, we didn't want any issues. So we put that out there, too. Not that she said she felt there would be, but I guess that's kind of why we didn't do the second one with her. The first one we did, she wasn't here yet, so then we did it on Zoom, and so, but it wasn't like we didn't like her.
Yeah, they, there was four great ones that we were down to.
Yeah, but as far as the accounting and stuff, they.
And number one also, we're looking at down the road, maybe doing like prim guard does with the ambulance.
Number two even, or.
Or whichever number, yeah, number two.
That we could use some of the twenty dollars.
Like the ambulance and then the, the prim guard, they get twenty thousand dollars a year to pay their employee.
Well, they use part of that.
Yeah.
I get that, but we're, we're in a situation in City Hall that.
We, we, I said down the road, Steve, didn't I?
Yep, and I understand that. You did say down the road. But we're in a position right now where we need the.
Well, then how come, then how come we need a clerk sort of?
You're going to let me finish, or you're going to talk over me?
I'll talk over you.
If you want to talk over it, go ahead.
Go ahead, finish.
We're in a position where we need somebody in the accounting right now in our office that can get things straightened out. If we don't focus on that, we're going to have real problems in the near future.
Then how come when I said that, when you were hiring Scott, all the time you kept saying, well, we need a city manager or whatever, we need that, we need somebody in here, stuff.
Jane, that's done.
No, that's not done, Steve, it was done. You, you guys did that. Who voted against it? Who voted against hiring?
Jane, that's all done.
No, it isn't, Steve, you keep saying, we need somebody in here to get for accounting. That's what we needed the first time, didn't we? We needed somebody.
And we didn't get that.
And there's a stack of papers, this thick sitting on the piling cabinet over there.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And now we need to focus on moving forward and getting the right person in here.
Number three candidate had, she had some clerical and stuff like that, because she worked for a roofing company in the summertime or whatever like that, and she did. But she made the comment, I remember her, she made the comment, well, you're going to have to teach me everything, I don't know any of that stuff. So you're, everybody's going blank. Actually, candidate number one has all the experience, but we didn't feel that she was.
Well, it's been a while back.
It's been a while back, she walked away from it, how many years ago?
And candidate number two, I outright asked, do you have any clerical or bookkeeping? And she said, none. She said she felt she was a fast, quick learner, and she had computers and stuff, but no, she does not have it either. So, I mean, we're kind of that way with a lot of them. We have a lot more medical than we had actual bookkeeping or accounting.
Yeah, but there wasn't anybody really that had bookkeeping except for number one, right?
Yes, she had it six, seven years ago.
Six, seven years ago, yeah, so.
Well, I think you should seriously reconsider.
Okay, how about we agree on a compensation to offer candidate one, two, or three, either way, regardless of what they, because it sounds like they're all in relatively the same position, and we know more of the salary you're choosing to set anyway. So the question basically is, what amount do you want between eighteen and nineteen? That was what she was recommending, you were all agreement, I assumed. We haven't thought about that yet, so can we, what do we want to say? Eighteen fifty, eighteen twenty-five, and?
I'd say eighteen fifty, and then after a short period of time, if we see they're catching on, then.
I'd say at their six-month review, then, just like, that's when they get their rate, that's their six-month review.
Do you want to wait six months? Do we want to give them just like a three months?
That's what I said, yeah, just something to wait and give.
Because I think we could update that policy, is it just a policy?
Because, because the page is.
Yeah, I think in the hearing book, it's six months. The new six-month review.
Right, it's already coming up, so. Unless you want to do it after the school, that clerk school is the end of July, end of July, new person one.
See how that all rolls along.
That's what we'd allow.
Be about two months.
I don't have a problem with that either, see how things roll.
There's a lot of companies that do the six-month review, I don't think that's unreasonable.
I don't either, and I, I would even consider three months if we see everything's moving along, but whether we want to change it, I don't know. Makes no difference.
Well, we could, we could do that, we could stick with the policy, the six-month review, and then if the employee committee saw, you know, some improvements in the.
Yep, at three months, and they want to.
At three months, and they wanted to meet and mention it to, you know.
Yep.
And we could, we could.
Yeah, because we did like one month.
Do it at halftime. But I think, I think stick with the six-month review.
Okay, nope.
With the policy that we have, because we don't want to be changing policies in the midst of.
Yeah, nope, I don't have a problem with that. We can plan on that, and then they know that, and like you said, if something changes, we can address it.
Michelle, you sat in on some of these, or these interviews?
Just the last two.
Just the last two. May I ask, do you have any feelings one way or the other, or do you have any, do you have anything to say?
I was, I mean, they're both nice. I was concerned that there wasn't any bookkeeping or clerical.
Okay.
She's young, and I know most young people learn quicker than older people. The other applicant has experience, it's been a while. And just because you have bookkeeping experience doesn't mean you can step in here and do this job.
Right.
I have bookkeeping experience and I'm.
Well, and look, you were away from it for a while, too, when you came in here, and I don't think you've got bookkeeping behind you other than where you work, right?
Why, it's in the college.
Oh, did you? Okay. Because you took, what? You took transcription.
Yeah, I took transcription, but.
Okay.
I also did medical law, you know.
Okay, there you are, okay, that's what you've got behind you.
Plus, you worked at Fisher's.
Up there. Okay, so I've heard some consensus on eighteen fifty with the regular six-month review unless earlier option is, can be presented to council for approval earlier than that if needed. Okay, so now we have one agreed point so far. Let's see about candidates one, two, or is three on the table? I don't, yeah. Well, the plus with candidate three is I'm guessing it started immediately. Because as far as, she's not working anywhere at all here, is she? That would be a plus, because we're going to have to give at least two weeks for anybody else. So, on the twenty-third, so that puts a set June sixth or so, you tell them tomorrow, that's the chance to give, so June seventh at the earliest is the start date. It'll be a Wednesday, just after our next meeting. Obviously, we've got end of year things, that's why we called this, partly because we'd like to get, heard some help in doing the regular, regular office interruption part, so that then she can be doing some of those extra reports and have some more focused time on that. That was the intent there, anyway. Okay, so, well, let's just hold that thought for a brief moment, and we want to discuss the other open personnel situation, and what do you want to do with that? Do we want to post it, advertise it? Is it under the same category, job description, I mean, all of the above?
Do we still have any of those left from?
Yes. I was going to say, I might have one, okay, we got. Well, I think it definitely needs to be posted, and I really feel, this is just my thought, that we should, when someone gives a notice like that and says they got two weeks and they're done, that we should post a notice immediately. Because I think this messing around, I mean, now, he's going to be gone the end of this week, and we've got nothing even out there.
That didn't go in the paper last Friday?
I don't think so. But, and so, I just feel that we need to change that. If somebody says they're done, then pull out the description of what we need and go, so that it's out there.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, because it's too.
If it's a notice that's in writing, then.
Yes, which it has to be.
Yeah.
And then go immediately. Now, if perchance, it's a dollar issue or whatever, and they change their mind, then I guess that's the way it works, when they'll have to say, well. I was kind of preparing on that last. Yes, right, and we did do that. Now we worked with that, so. So I just feel it needs to be updated, and I don't know if you need to, we have, do we have a policy on that, or? I think it would just be that you state that, you give that. And have it in the events and call it that from now on, somebody. Because previously, there was some problem with when that went out earlier, so, like that, so we were waiting to make sure. Okay, to make sure everybody agreed.
I think if all the council members know that person, whoever gave their week, two weeks notice, then I would safely be able to post it.
Right, I feel the, if it's an outside person, Kelly puts some comments in, what he, what he feels he's looking for, and the same thing in here.
Yep.
And then post it, rather than wait for whatever our meeting is or whatever's coming up, let's just move. So they're not sitting there empty-handed.
Right.
Okay? And so, go ahead and follow the same, when we, when you hired this person the first time, follow the same ad type, ad title, job description, all of the above. Right, put it some locally, put it on Facebook or our new website, whenever that's going, and I think you've been doing the shopper in here in town. Okay? Because we also need that with the health date and cleaning, right? Cleaning, yeah. Any lady, or gentleman, whoever.
We haven't had any bites on any of those?
Nice, if we could have get some school kid, maybe that would be interested in the cleaning part, I don't know, for a part-time job, it's not that often, so it's.
I think the hard part is when the lounge room has to be used, then you have to come in and do it, and then you have to come back. I think that's probably a problem.
Yeah, you would know.
I would know.
Yeah, you did, yeah. No, I can see that, and sometimes you got how many right in a row.
Yeah.
Yep, I can live with that.
So, I mean, obviously, everybody has a, have a, you know, that when that gets used, that's probably the biggest problem.
Yeah, right, I can see that.
And in that case, could we allow someone else to come in and help?
Yes, right.
I always made Taylor.
How many hours is it a month?
Four, oh, it's about four, okay, period. Three or four.
Two and ten, everyone.
But, you know, there's sometimes I think that more could be done than, than what's being done.
Okay, and maybe that needs to be addressed to.
Evergreen or something.
Yeah, but maybe some of that should be gone over, bathrooms especially. So, okay.
And I talked to Johansson and just threw it out to her, but she's, she's too busy.
Yeah. So, you know, anyone?
Yes, I know.
So, Michelle's way. Going back. Okay, so now we have that agreement, good, looking at disagreeing on things. Scary, isn't it? Now we're going back to our one, two, four, three, candidate. Do you feel we need to do a second interview with number three then, because we didn't? Or do, it doesn't make any difference, because you guys can see the app and stuff? Where do you think? Those would be the dense interview.
Doesn't matter to me. I told you she was a good candidate.
Yep, we both said that.
A little problem with, you know.
Did you talk to her about that?
Yes.
Okay.
I brought it up to her.
Okay.
She had a good answer. She said, what happens here stays here, and what happens at home stays there.
Which is, right.
That is, I said, it just, sometimes it doesn't work that way all the time, right? But. I guess you don't know unless you've been shot.
Right.
You don't. Nobody does. So what I'm hearing for this candidate to, a role of eighteen fifty an hour, which is, again, we don't really, aren't really an hourly employee, this person would be salary correct at thirty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, is the.
Well, we don't pay hourly.
At least hourly. Do you hourly keep, do this person hourly, not?
I think she should be moved, Michelle.
She should be moved this salary. I think she should. And I think we need to probably put that on the June fifth meeting to appoint her as the clerk if that's what she wants.
Well, I haven't put her in yet, can we?
We can.
Can we still do that, you think?
As long as Carol's, is Carol still?
She's a syndrome.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Did we even have to ever prove that?
What?
We didn't have to prove that, did we?
We, I, we did it at one of our meetings, and she was going to be the interim, because she was just. Technically, she has, she assumes all duties in absence of, so it's technically there, but Carolyn's advising, obviously, and assisting as needed, which was needed.
I mean, can she still assist if we do appoint her at the next meeting?
Oh, I think so.
Yeah.
I think we can do that, we should do it the first of July.
That would, yeah.
And then maybe make her salary to do it all at the same time.
Make her salary then.
Start her on the first of July, so it's fiscal year, and.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Okay, so sorry for that confusion, my, this person is hourly then, okay.
Yeah, right.
And shooting for forty hours a week, though. Right, huh?
Yep.
And with benefits?
Yep.
Okay. Understanding there, great.
All benefits.
All right, so now I just need a motion of someone to.
I'll make the motion now, we do number three.
Okay, we've had a motion from Lexi to make an offer to candidate three at the eighteen fifty hourly with benefits, forty eight, full times, forty hours a week, full-time rate. Do we have any support for that?
I'll second that.
Second by Steve. So we've had a motion by Lexi, a second by Steve, to offer candidate three the position at eighteen fifty.
at eighteen fifty per hour, forty hours a week with benefits.
Do they vote, or is it just us?
I've always wondered.
Oh, oh.
Oh, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, they just bring your.
Oh, perfect.
They've done this.
I know, I just didn't know from that work. The committee's I'm on, we don't realize to vote on anything at all.
No, but if something came up, you said, oh, well, you really don't.
Right.
Yeah. Unless anyone had to be excused with their.
Right.
Prehused in this case. Okay. So we have a motion out of session. Is there any further discussion on candidate three, the position, the duties, the starting, the salary, any of those items?
You, um. I was gonna suggest to table it and then interview her a sec, this person a second time, but, you know, and that's fine.
Yeah, I thought of that, too.
And if you feel comfortable with the first interview, I'm, I'm fine with that, that's, that's fine, too. So that's just my comment.
And Jay, what did you feel?
That's fine for me.
And we don't have to do a second, or?
No, that's, it's not gonna change anybody's.
Okay, and the other, we, great call to a vote then. Hall in favor of extending an offer of employment to candidate three at eighteen fifty per hour for forty hours full-time with benefits on hourly, sorry, hourly candidate, forty hours full-time with benefits, say aye.
Aye.
So we offer it to her, and we'll see what she says.
Yes, it's an offer to. Okay, so that, how many, did I hear, all's ayes, okay, and opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay, this expressed nay, okay. Rest of our own, down as ayes, okay? All right, that means motion carries, and we'll extend that offer to candidate three. Okay, the, and we've already expressed your interest in that, I don't believe that needs a motion, we'll have that in a minute, so that you confirm that we will extend the, or start promoting the position for wastewater operator labor as previously promoted, and on ads, and Facebook, and locally, as well as adding in the police officer and cleaning person. Okay, that brings us, if unless there's further discussion on personnel. Do you have any?
I think we need to make sure that these people that are renting the lot room do everything on the list.
Just.
There was a group that left garbage there for, what, over the weekend and that, it stunk real bad in there, and.
In the lot room?
Yes.
Oh. I smelt it, it was like Monday.
Monday.
And it's a group of people that have used it quite a bit, so.
Well, that's what I think the deposit was intentionally is that.
And they don't do it. They just use it all the time.
Correct, and that group did not, so that is, we should make sure they are aware of it.
Do we have a sign-up that they?
There's a list, there's a list back there you have to do.
Okay.
I'm sure maybe they, they may accidentally maybe did it too, but, yeah, I wouldn't want to walk into that either.
No, she said it was awful.
Oh, I bet.
It was.
Especially over the weekend?
Yep.
First, we were kind of blaming Nate, thinking maybe his dinner's got a little crazy. Snack or something, but, so I turned the sensey pot on, the first day it helped, the second day I hope he couldn't cover it.
Didn't work.
It went in too deep.
Well, I know, we were seeing somebody, that one, must've been that Saturday morning, they had a shower or something, and I, the gal said about walking, and I said, I'm gonna remind you about making the garbage out, because we have a problem, and she said, nope, it's already gone. I said, good.
It's only silos, bugs and that, too.
Right, we don't need any of that.
Okay.
Number seven, what were you?
Yes, so, number seven is regarding permit approvals and the processes therein. We do have Mike here, he's a member of our Board of Adjustment, and as well has a, an application regarding, he's a contractor on, an application that was approved, that has some setback concerns, probably shouldn't have been, as done, but, again, we kind of all had some trusted people.
Is that the deck?
This is brass or something.
Oh.
Garage.
I thought, I thought he was only coming out eight feet, Mike.
Thank you, Steve.
What's that?
I thought he was only coming out eight feet on you.
He's only coming out eight feet.
Yeah. How far, how far is the setback for the street, though? I thought it started up back.
Well, I find out now he's seven feet in with that setback.
Yeah, he's already.
But my issue of being approved and having ordered two thousand dollars worth of rafters is my problem, and my homeowner's other.
Who's this?
My homeowner's all the country for a month, so it's my issue to figure out what's gonna happen to that accessory.
Okay, now, he's got eight feet out, but he's thirty-four feet from the.
Well, the thing here is probably, we'd be lucky if one percent of the people in the city know where the legal, where the legal lot line is.
I heard that's a mess.
And my answer, well, it's, it's not a mess, it's simple. Have to live in the streets, where you'll live in the streets where you're legal lot lines, but, in this case, Kevin filled it out, I looked at it, said, yep, all your numbers are right, I didn't pay attention to what. He just wrote his distance from the curb or whatever, I just, you know, he wrote it, he filled it out right as a homeowner can know, that it's approved. And Kelly was two days behind him doing his. If he, if he'd have come two days earlier, I could've had footage of her, because he was two days behind him getting the. Locates in there. We had called on Friday, and it was Thursday noon, and he called me, and I was down there, it's like, I could've had, I would've torn out on.
But he was gone Monday and Tuesday, yeah.
By rights, I could've, I need forty, they need forty dollars of all they need, and I'd have called probably Friday morning. Which, that doesn't change any, my issue right now is that we wouldn't do it for, and I think when I priced her down in the brass, I was looking at, is that drawing of where those lot lines are in there? Is there another sheet? Did you copy that?
Now, what, what is the question, then?
The question is, Kelly's telling me it's not legal.
By what, what, Mike?
Well, we're seven feet, we are seven feet, and you see where it says eighteen in front of ours, so that should be twenty-five feet. It's eighteen is what we would need. If you look down at Carlson's, and probably standing in his yard, looking at Carlson's, why I didn't, I couldn't even know that, being really, because, because Ryan's only eight feet off the legal lot line, it should be a twenty-five foot front yard. And my, I guess my issue is what, what you guys are gonna say, are you gonna allow this? Do we need to make an adjustment? I talked to Kevin.
Well, doesn't this go to you guys, or the?
So what?
Doesn't it go to you guys, and then if you guys don't make a decision, then it comes to us?
Yeah, there's a problem.
But if you wanna go that route, that's gonna throw me behind by two weeks, I mean, I.
So can you tell, tell me again what the problem is?
Yeah, I don't understand where.
We're seven feet into the, into the front, twenty-five years, yeah, twenty-five foot setback, as you would give us.
I thought it says here thirty-four feet, though.
Yeah, that's what brass are filled out.
This is what.
Oh, that's what we went, that's what we went off.
That was his measurement to the curb, so that wasn't illegal. And I said, there isn't, there isn't a homeowner in Palina, very few homeowners in Palina that would know what is actually the legal lot line. They all think it's the curb that's standing inside of your sidewalk. Well, there ain't no sidewalks on this street either, though. I took this measurement that I had on here from Jenny Morris, I went up there. Or you get the width of, all the street lists are different, they vary from seventy to.
Also, he went from the street, got his thirty-four.
Well, he went from the curb, yeah. And he didn't know any different, and I didn't, he didn't pay attention to that part of it.
So basically, he just wants to add on eighteen to his current garage.
So if you look at that, then this, this line of, extra line of proposal condition puts him at eighteen foot.
What is that, doesn't it say, though, when people put decks on the front of their house, they have to be, what, eight feet back, seven or eight feet back from the sidewalk?
No.
No.
Is, is there one, I thought, we, we gave a permit here last year.
The front porch is supposed to be twenty-five setback.
Twenty-five from the, from the sidewalk.
That's all adding on the garage.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we, we measured that one from the street, that setback on that wall there, because I thought that was the word that set, it came from, but it's on the side of the sidewalk.
More of your lot. So what they're saying is, is, his property is already non-conforming, so technically, you're not supposed to allow further non-conformance.
It doesn't matter, some houses are setback farther than others in other places.
What I've always looked at is, if you look down the block and other houses, or, but now, in this case, the two houses to the west of it are both a little further out, and I don't think there was the one on the corner, I think it's many.
Yeah.
That one's probably three foot in the east.
The one to the west of his has gotta be out there, because she's close to the street.
That one, the one right to the west is like one foot out.
Yeah.
It's two foot from, from Brasher's existing house. Their existing house was built back in the twenty-five foot. I've always looked at it as, if other stuff on the block is on that line, is it, is it a nice, or is it, is it gonna be, yeah, I can see if one person went and bumped theirs off, and the person next door's, if I set my porch all the time, no, I can't look at the street, that would be your issue. When I was remeasuring the other night, Rose, who actually owns that, it's not everyone knows.
Okay.
And she was out there, and I was standing out there, and.
What?
I held up a two-by-four right there, and I said, would this bother you, if this drive is built out here, just don't bother me? But I mean, that's.
I know.
But that's how it's supposed to be done.
I know.
Let's go, let's go way back to where you could get a, the one thing I don't like that is in this book is where it says you should not allow any change, non-conforming things to happen unless it's a hardship, and I think that fringe really should be out there. If you have a neighbor that says, I don't care if you build five feet from the lot line rather than seven.
That was the old one.
Four feet.
But then, when the house sells, then you inherit, you already inherited.
But it's, it's built. You bought the house, or you bought the house next to it that's already there, you can't complain.
No.
Right.
You bought the house, that's.
Because we were able to do that, too, with our talk to the neighbor, and sure, you could build right up to my line, you didn't care.
I mean, I did at my old house years ago, but, and, and as long as there was, that was a, in most cases.
Sometimes, you know, we should maybe, should, maybe adjust it a little bit, but I know we have to be careful, because you can't change every rule. Whether, so he's building another garage, is that what?
No, he's just extending.
Just extending his garage.
Oh, further, okay.
Right now, if he gets out of his pickup, he's gotta walk around the back of his pickup before he closes the door, and he closes the door because that garage.
Oh, and that's exercise.
It is true, but he's not getting smaller, so.
No, no, he's not.
So the rafters and everything are there?
Well, they were ordered.
Ordered, okay.
So the day we got approval on, almost right away, I was just kind of surprised he came back that quick, that he had it approved, we ordered them. Get this thing, try and get that part of it done before he gets back, so we can consult on it. So we kept calling the day one, the day, and I said, no, we're moving away just a little bit, and. And it, I mean, if you were gonna argue the eighth, you know, I had talked with Kelly on the phone, and I talked to her nine years, six, seven, eight, but, you know, instead of pushing the shovel, we had to knock two feet off, that wouldn't be the end of the world if they had the trash wrapped, they just keep turning them, feel comfortable throwing that, when it was approved.
Well, this is what I, I'm seeing. We approved it, but we approved it with these numbers, see?
Yeah.
And that's the whole thing, is, that's the hard part about it, is, we're given these numbers, and we look at this, and we say, oh, okay, this is setback here, this is this, and we didn't make that mistake, that's, you know, so we can't be, you know, pinpointed and say, well.
If it doesn't say on there.
Front lot line.
Specifically, the legal lot line.
Yeah, I know, but what I'm saying is, we're go, we're going by these numbers that these people are giving, and.
I mean.
You know, I don't know how that.
I don't know how much time Kelly has to spare today, obviously, he was two, two days late, but he was, he knew enough to know that it was.
See, that's, that's the problem, yeah, that's the problem we're having, is, and then we even told these, these, the new employees that were hired, that they're gonna kind of be in charge of ability permits, is that what they're, is part of their job.
Well, that, or my other option is, perhaps you consider for the short term, sending them all out again, either to Vulcan or Derek or Lerner, and letting a third party verify them. The only thing is, then you again have, you have to pay for them.
That's fifty dollars an hour.
You have to pay for them to come here.
And that was a little steep when you go that route.
Well, I think we've done.
We're gonna have Steve approve all of them.
I, I think we've done.
Throwing money away in a lot of cases, and. And number one, he's gonna say, where's the lot line? Sandy started with this right away on the job we were doing. Well, you're gonna have to show us where the lot line is, if you don't know where the lot line is, you're gonna have to have your property appraised. Well, we're getting ours appraised here this week, and theirs, it's gonna be two to three thousand dollars. You can't tell every homeowner they have a lot and have their property appraised. And in most cases, you can figure out, I've never seen a pin in my life.
I have, I have two, I have two of them.
I've never, I've never seen one.
I have two, I have two of them.
I've never seen anybody dig one up or find it.
Yeah, I have two in my yard.
Well, then, I think by rights, we should maybe adjust.
Yeah.
This little bit, our zoning thing, so that.
But there's easy ways, in my opinion, there's easy ways, I don't.
Because if you're not around, and, you know, five years down the road, and we're not around, and now we're going to do this, I think it needs to be said somewhere and clarified that this can be, you know, use your head or use your, to make it right.
Well, we need to inform everyone that they either know where their lot line is, or what they're using as their lot line. When they provide these measurements, it does not teach them on the battery.
I'd be glad to go out at night if you had a question or one, and try to figure it out, if that homeowner can tell me what their lot dimensions are. You can go to that map back there, and it shows you what every lot was plotted at for with years ago. And Sandy said, that's a old map. I said, the dimensions didn't change.
No.
Right.
I go on my own block to find out where mine was, to check and see if, if my length was correct. I had every measurement down the block from your end down, found the starting one, told everybody, don't worry, I'm not snooping in your yard, and it came out right to where the curb ends on my property. And when they put curbs and stuff in, they don't put extra in, it's.
Right.
That's where it landed. So I know that's correct on my property, that's the only thing I know is correct. And the center of the street should be where the pin is.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you this. We're, we're sitting on a property over there, that the guy complained, complained to us, we're taking his easement on from, and his garage is two feet on our, on the city's property over there.
Is that by Google, or by?
No, we had a survey. They started down here by Casey's.
So you refer to that.
Yes.
Okay.
Because I told him, if I were to buy that lot, I'd be putting doors on the outside of his garage for storage, so.
But see, he, he doesn't, he doesn't have an easement, but he said he wanted it. He has an easement with Lushers.
Yeah, it's not on that property.
No, it's not on that property, I kept telling Sandy that.
Built on that easement.
Yeah, I kept telling Sandy that, because.
Down there.
Fidelke and Brotherton.
So what about the other building permit that we're having an issue too with?
Well, the other one is regarding a non-conforming situation, and they are requesting a variance or a rezoning application, which take, well, basically, it takes it to the Board of Adjustment.
Yes.
And they're requesting that, so before we take that step, we could stop it essentially, And they're requesting that, so before we take that step, we could stop it essentially, from what I understand, if you would choose to override it. But he is asking to build a patio and he's asking to go, let's see, is that, we're putting it again on
Twenty-five feet, isn't it?
No.
Twenty feet.
Oh.
And legally, you can only go eight feet.
I think it's a deck.
Yes, it's a, it's a deck, a patio deck. And so it was only, he wants an addition, there wasn't an eight foot porch already there, so he is already allowed to continue being nonconforming to the eight feet. Uh, he was asking for six more feet.
I got one already, well, I got the letter that
It does, he's on a corner lot, which is where the twenty foot goes more ways. And they, yeah.
Well, I think
We did discuss about patio.
How close does it come to that fire hydrant?
That should not, should not be
Should that be a problem?
Well, that's not true, cause Darren should be near it.
Did you get
Not Masons, this just came in for the
Do you, do you know this one, Mike, have you looked at this one?
I actually didn't see his drawing, I know what they don't wanna do.
There's one drawn there.
If there isn't, I'm not
I, I don't think we can come out further because we've denied people
Were you, uh, Mary?
First came out to the, even with her garage, the existing garage.
But you kinda wanna go down there and see how far she gotta go.
Twelve, apparently was what she wanted.
Twelve feet off the curb. Well, that's, that's, that's what our key is, is twelve feet.
We gave, we, we gave, we gave her an adjustment to build more farther out than what she requested.
Twenty-five feet.
Yep.
Cause she's on a board lot.
Yep.
Well, I thought she only went up to the, where that garage was.
That much, pretty sure it's more than that.
Yeah, a couple feet more than, could you, they come out the stairs, I'm just
Right, he's like down at the end of where nobody hardly ever drives, like, you know, you know, like
But does that mean that
What you have to remember down the road is that the next person's gonna walk and do the same, and they might be able to visit the street.
Exactly, and why it's changed.
But Mary's on a busy street too.
Yeah.
Why is that
Did you break her glasses?
So, how, he wants to come out fourteen feet.
Fourteen feet from the house.
And where is that?
His lot line is technically like in Menlo's house, it's very, it's a third into the house.
It's what?
How
That's where it was, his property was built before, before the lot line things were found apparently, and he's way out already. Which was there, so it's not conforming, so he's allowed, like I said, according to the rules, to not conforming, he's allowed to continue nonconformance, he just can't go further into it.
So he's, he's allowed to build an eight foot
He can, yes, correct.
Yes.
He's asking for six more feet, and I, but he's planning to not make a big, you know, it's not a garage, it's just a deck, but he does wanna put it up, what's it say?
It said that wants to be twenty long, fourteen high and twenty inches rise from the ground.
Right, so it's over a foot high is what makes it against the rules. So you're, he's asking for eight inches and six feet, eight inches high and six feet further variance into the, going to the east.
How is that wrong? Eight inches high, what are you talking about?
It was eight, eight foot porch was removed, so the deck would add additional eight, six foot.
The deck, basically you're allowed to do patio and a one foot high step bench or whatever without a top on it, without a back
Mine's higher than that, the one that I just bought.
That's better.
Yeah, you're behind your house.
Isn't this one behind his house?
No.
On the, okay, then I'm
And you gotta remember that Wood Street is not a seventy foot right away, it's
It's already small.
It's already a narrow right away.
Is it, how do you even know what, yeah, it's not even a legal street.
I think it's like a fifty-three foot right away.
So we were to someday, many, many years
You're never gonna change the width of the street, that's what it is. But with no curb and gutter, you don't know where to find the center of the street.
As I was saying, if it was curb and gutter
How, what curb and gutter?
That's what I'm saying, if you're guessing on the center of the street, that, first of all, that street isn't straight.
No.
And then the right away is not a seventy foot right away like normal streets, it's a fifty-three foot right away. The only way he can know for sure is to have that lot surveyed.
Are the streets, are they set on the, on the
Uh
Not necessarily.
No.
Not necessarily.
But they haven't had anything surveyed or anything, have they?
They were just, like I said, using the existing, what was there and then asking to extend further.
Lose in there, you will not lose it to yourself.
So they did not, when I read it and we responded with, to their permit, that's what we said, we talked it over with them and told them their options, how about go to the side of the house, the back of the house, cause they're a corner lot, you know, like there's really no way for them to do that, they could, there's a ton of other options, they would just like to present this to you so that I'm not the, and Michelle are not the only ones making decisions for that. And so they said they would like to take you to board adjustments, and at this point, if that's what you all think should happen, then that
You're talking about Masons.
For Masons, sorry, yes, clarification on Masons.
I move that we
Well, if we do Masons, then technically Kevin should go to the board of adjustments as well.
Yes, probably.
Yeah, I have a problem with Kevin.
It should probably, yeah.
Yeah, Kevin's, I was gonna say, I don't
I don't have a problem with that.
But why, I mean, we didn't do like the ten feet or something like that, not quite as far out as he's looking at it, between the Masons.
So does he consider the twenty foot long, is that running north and south?
Yeah.
And the fourteen
He wants fourteen feet to the east.
Yeah, you kinda see the old patch of, that's what was on there, and just come out another double that basically and then
I mean, in Mary's case, we told her to go down, put some plies in, we went down and looked at it, said, well, that's
That was the one down there?
Yeah, Mary Anderson's.
And that was allowed through board adjustment.
That was why she wanted to get, you know.
I remember.
Now she's off, working on another house, so.
She's not living there either, is she?
Well, she rents it out.
Yeah, but it is her house, she's gonna retire it, that's what I heard.
Her forever home.
Her forever home, yeah.
Was that the one on the highway?
No, the one right down
Jim Roors, I mean, Jim Roors' house.
I'm just curious, and she has all these rentals, does she have like hotel taxes and stuff that she pays to the city or?
I heard Steve Hartman said, no, and he does not understand how he has to pay and she doesn't.
And he does and she doesn't, then.
I said, don't ask me these questions, you find the hotel people, or the state or whoever's in charge.
Well, it's not into the city, I'm saying that you
Different topic, but yes, okay.
Just, we got off
I didn't get, okay, good point. Okay, so we were discussing, so the Mary deck that, because they did ask, how did that get approved? So that wasn't board of adjustments allowance?
No, because you had been approved.
You guys are the ones that make the final decision.
We made the final decision.
No, that's not
No, they did, they, I thought they made the decision, they did not come to agreement on the decision, so then it came
We approved, we approved, it was okay, the hard part.
We had, overall
Another day, it's
How it's gone in the past is, it goes to those guys and they will say yes or no, and we don't even have to listen to their yes or no, it comes back to the council and they just make a recommendation.
Right, right.
And then the council, but I don't, as far as what's in the book, I mean, that's how we're gonna be for, but I don't know.
Well, it was just like the workmeisters.
So in the case of what we did there, we went past that hardship thing, cause she could say, well, I don't wanna do that, you say, well, it's, it'd have to be a hardship, well, it wasn't. What you could do in front of a house is if you were in a wheelchair or something, yeah, then you can
Yeah.
Like that, but
And we did do that on up, up and, right next to uh
By across the street from like Dan Stammer, Joel Stammer?
Yep.
Oh. We're making an adjustment, cause she's in the middle of the
But in my opinion, if you want, this, it's the bedroom community, that's what we are.
Right.
If you want people to build, I mean, Kevin Brassers taking a chunk of money, he's gonna pay more taxes, so he's not
Right.
But I think that that needs to be somehow put in our policy or something, so that they don't say, well, how come they got to do it back in two twenty-three and now it's twenty-five and you're telling me no?
That's the, that's the whole problem with all that is
It's always, there's always some neighbor down the road that's gonna complain.
Well, he does
But also like, you know, back to Masons, he kept his, I mean, his
It's not his neighbor's permission, but
I mean, that's a
Yeah, that doesn't count.
That, 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 he's going towards the east of the street, it isn't
There's no neighbor there.
There's no neighbor there.
He's on the corner, and there's no one crossing.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, and that doesn't count.
Not anymore.
But you get your permission, no.
You know, maybe we should just
Just on fences.
Where there's any error in order
Change it to neighbor.
It says, yes, made by the, so if there's an error or a mistake or a alleged error, then made by the zoning administrator and enforcement of the ordinance, then that's what the board of adjustment is to hear and decide such exceptions specifically offer, authorized to pass by the terms of this ordinance. And variances must be allowed in contrary to public interest, and there, a literal enforcement should be, should necessarily result in unnecessary hardship. So again, that is for our zoning ordinance, it's the word hardship, which obviously we are not saying either of these would technically apply, but that again is
They're both upping their value of their house down from something, or if they stay long-term or
Well, yeah, it's a hundred percent better.
From what I understand.
I mean, yeah, the one
Masons is a lot better than what it looked like before.
And it's not empty anymore, that's in the house, that's not sitting empty, it's actually getting lived in and has, you know, like the rest of these houses, they're like mambas, just since they're empty.
And if they could, you know, that fourteen foot wide, if they could compromise and reduce that downside.
Yes, that's what I'm wondering.
You said, uh, about twelve feet?
Yes, that's what I'm thinking, and I said that to Dean one day when I was down there, and I said, Dean, I said, couldn't we just do a compromise? And he said, like, what, ten or twelve? I said, you got it.
If you look at the beacon rap, this is lying, and I don't, you know, that can be off obviously by two feet, it was on, on the Maple Street one. Cause that beacon shows it two feet further.
Well, I just think that would make probably everybody happy.
Be, you can't use beacon though.
Beacon's not reliable.
Beacon was two feet off on mine, and I had mine surveyed twice, and it, the survey came out pretty much in the same place both times.
As beacon or?
As mine, not
You're a surveyor.
My surveyor, beacon was two feet off.
It says right on the bottom, beacon Snyder, this is not
Yeah, not legal.
Because that property, old camp property says it is off about two, three feet. I think both of them, we said, uh, see what they have to say.
I'm perfectly fine with brassers, I don't have a problem with it.
What happened if we called Dean and be like, we'll compromise to twelve instead of fourteen?
Yeah, would that make everything better?
So you're allowing four feet further into nonconforming is all, that's the only issue.
They're gonna be twenty long by twenty, by twelve feet.
By twelve feet, so four, you're asking for four more, he's asking them for four more feet, you're allowing four feet into the nonconforming instead of six, correct? Am I hearing that right?
And you said the fire hydrant has nothing to do with anything, as far as we know?
I mean, it's not familiar.
I didn't know if you'd had me so far away when the truck, I didn't know.
I mean, if they have to respond and do something, they'll tear apart his deck, I guess, gotta do what they gotta do.
Yeah, well, I didn't know how close that was on the fire hydrant either.
How close is it?
It's pretty close, right to the street, it's right by the
Does it show that on the thing?
It's right by the pole.
It used to have, there used to be a drawing on it.
I don't know how far in that fire hydrant was, at least for
There used to be a drawing on this
It used to be right on
On the, this termite.
This is the original one.
It's on the yard.
Well, and if it had an eight foot porch on it, then it would be back to what it was originally.
Well, right now, according to this, he wants fourteen feet.
Right.
That's why I said, if we go down to twelve, maybe that would be
Well, the eight is already there, so he's only asking for six more nonconforming.
Instead of, yeah, so we can knock down the four more.
The eight is at the line?
The eight is
The eight, he already gets, but he's asked, yeah.
He can stay nonconforming and he can update it as long as he does not exceed and further go into nonconforming, unless you take a
I don't have a problem with that either.
Well, it's, I mean, it steps to the front of the house.
I know the side, the side isn't conforming right now, cause you can't tell me that's twenty-five feet from the middle of that street to the, to the house.
But how do we really know where the
Well, I know, that's the whole thing.
We don't.
We don't, because that street's
That starts
But that's what it says on the thing though, on this
You could, you could go in that case and measure those properties from the opposite end, though, there is a
A regular street there.
You'd need to go to Maple Street and get the street width, and you'd find the lot with, like your brother's lot with, and no, it's the next block down.
You could, but Maple Street's not in the right place either, I found that out.
You're not gonna move the curbs, no?
Nope.
If a street's seventy feet wide is thirty-five in the center, and everything's figured from that.
Yep, you're not moving Maple Street, Maple Street's not in the right place either. I found that out with my survey. And I can show you those pins in street.
Since we're talking about streets and everything.
So, so really, if you really wanted to find out and really wanted to find out, a person needs to get their lot surveyed. I know there's expense in that, I had some expense in it, cause I did it twice, um, but ultimately, that's I mean, if you want, no doubt, that's what you need to have done.
I really don't think we need to go into that expense for
Well, it's not our expense.
Yeah, but you go to a homeowner that's
It's the homeowner's expense, yes.
But I feel like if we're, if they, the board adjustments, if, if we have the final approval, we might as well just decide tonight, instead of giving this another, and at the next meeting, it's
Well, I get that, yep, I understand.
The whole thing, the whole thing of the permit is, you, you legally have to know where your lot line is.
Yes.
You legally do, and Sandy Hart done that and did that, and everybody got so mad about it and stuff, but she was right, you have to legally know where your lot line is.
The site shall clearly show the property under consideration and all property with fifteen hundred feet. The property boundaries and property legal descriptions will be based on actual survey or legal description of records. The legal description on the record would be at the reporter's office and perimeter.
Right.
What were you saying? That's on beacon though too, the legal description.
Yeah, you can get that, those numbers on beacon, and that's gonna be right.
Yep, your legal description will be on beacon, yep.
The only thing that sending it to the board of adjustment also does is that then if they choose to appeal, that has to go to the, to the courts. That would, that would, in a petition to court for thirty days of action of the board. Otherwise, all decisions of the board of adjustment shall be final immediately upon filing the court's decision, there's no counsel's
Really?
If you make a decision.
See, I think that kind of
We voted on all of them once before they came back in.
Well, yes, then we, we voted on workmeisters after they had their meeting. I don't know.
Workmeister's a little different case though too.
I know, but you still
They were trying to change
They're changing the zoning.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, from the residential
From residential, and there were neighbors that weren't in favor of, and I don't
Yeah, right, that's right, we did the thing with that too.
I don't know if this goes anywhere, but I, like I come back to this, I helped Michelle with this one, and when I saw it thirty-four foot, okay, you know, it was all right, because when we did Joel Mueller tried to build that building, we had that, uh we, did a lot, it was signed, and then we, what do you call that, I can't think of the word, dis
Disapproved.
Disapproved, sorry, thank you.
Oh, man.
Because his numbers weren't right. Because he had, like, he had that the roof height was like sixteen feet, and that was the side walls or something. In, in a residential area, you can't build a building taller than, your roof line can't be taller than your neighbor's roof line. That's all I'm saying about, that, that's how come I said that it looked all right, cause I looked at the thirty-four feet.
So yes, the administrative appeal process is to appeal to the board of adjustment concerning the interpretation or administration of it, may be taken by any person aggrieved by whoever has already approved or was denied in such thing.
No idea of that need with the board of adjustments, is that a neighbor can come in and voice their opinion if it opposes you. That's really what
And no neighbor really has
Well, I'm not saying that, I mean, by rights, and that's what you should do if somebody's gonna complain.
That sounds like
Do we have to, do we have to send a letter to the neighbor?
Well, by, by
But I feel like
Cause when, when you're saying zoning, you have to send two, two hundred fifty feet
Right, and I'm, and it sounds like Kevin has talked to his and they seemed okay with it.
You said they were okay too?
Yeah, and she said that Carter Bryant obviously wouldn't worry about it, I mean
No, right.
But it, it's not for me to say, to make that decision or to say that either, so
So the variances, yes, they can show exceptional circumstances or other peculiar situation affecting a lot of record existing at the time of passage, so then you have to, he's, they're basically out requesting a variance, and he's here on behalf of brassers to sort of say, can we make a variance? So they are to provide the address of properties within two hundred feet of the subject property. And then we have to have a public hearing and all that, and to allow the variance.
I would see, I would, I don't know who has to call, but I would call whoever, Masons, see if they would do twelve feet instead of fourteen, and if they're okay with that, then I don't see why, I mean, I don't wanna see a problem then. And I don't really, I mean brassers either, I mean, they're just approving, they're just trying to update and approve their house.
I agree, like, see, I don't have a problem with either one of them.
I guess, I'd kinda like to see where, how much difference you may come
Oh, on Masons?
On Masons, if you went ten feet, twelve feet, where you'd be, it's gonna really, that might do much difference.
I would tell them to stake it out, so you can more, I'm busyly see it.
Yeah, that would be the best, so we can
See if you, we see if you would go to twelve feet.
Yep, stake it out, so we can see
Eight feet after the eight, well, you see the eight will be there, and then you can stake it out, two feet out.
Stake it out, yep, I think that's a good idea, so we can see what it looks like.
And then you would like to, you would, what, how are we, when are we approving this, on your waiting till June fifth meeting?
Can't we do it on June fifth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When did he apply for this?
Uh First, about a month ago? Is there a way that, let's call it that way, you could go stake it out now and we all drive by, wait?
Well, we have our meeting on June what?
June fifth, that's another week.
Two weeks.
Two weeks now, yeah.
I think they've been doing it quite well.
Yeah, yeah, he's been asking and
I think he's getting, he's getting anxious.
Yes, he's ready for a decision. So would you prefer to, you can make a decision tonight that says you can't, unless you see it, I mean, you could, you could, no, I don't know. That would delay his decision, yes, and his ability to
It would, but that's, that's the nature of it.
Hold a tone or something, or you could send us a note.
Could they send us up, I don't, that's something that they could stake it, they send a picture to Michelle, Michelle emails it or sends it all to us, and if it looks okay, then we, if it all, if we agree on it, then it all looks okay, then it's already approved, if it doesn't, then we will make another decision during the bid, is that, is that legal?
Do we do that?
Technically.
No, okay.
Yes, not really, to take action outside of.
How about Kelly goes stake it real quick and we all drive down there real quick and we all come back on a break and.
There you go.
I mean.
I'll go down, stretch the tape out for you, for twelve feet.
I mean, if we need to.
I'm willing to go.
If we need to make a decision, I bet.
Mason, would you be content with twelve feet?
Right, and I bet you he probably would. So, do we all need to take a five minute break, drive down there, you show us?
Okay, we just finish up here and be done. I'm not coming back.
If you wanna take a drive, let's put on.
I'm gonna drive, I'm.
Yeah, then we might as well look at them all, yeah.
If you want that to go to the zoning, then it needs to be going fast.
I, I don't have a problem with brassers building out. Does anybody have a specific problem?
No, and then, there's a difference between a deck going out that close to where he's, how many feet back already, braster is. So, how many feet actually is he back from the front sidewalk then?
Eighteen inches.
He's gonna be seven feet into the.
So, he's gonna just be eighteen inches? Eighteen inches?
How many, eighteen feet, sorry.
I'm like, oh, what's the hell?
He's gonna be seven feet into that.
So, how from the property line to where his new structure?
He's gonna be eighteen feet from what's considered the legal lot line, if you went down there now, there's two black marks which show the width of the sidewalk.
Okay.
Eighteen feet back, there's a cut crack in the line where the actually feet is. That white mark painted there is just my markings for the locates, that's why that was painted for the alley.
Okay. So, from the, from his, from his proposal to this, to the, to the inside of the sidewalk, he would only be eighteen feet from the new structure to this?
To what's considered the legal, if there were a sidewalk there.
Right.
And, and the reason for a lot of that would be, you know, a car takes eighteen, twenty feet when it's parked in front of a garage, if there were a sidewalk there.
Right.
You know, he'd have to be cautious, you know, it's a car parked in the sidewalk, visual sidewalks, it's a block.
Right, no.
There's a reason for these numbers.
But then, the whole town is in uniform, so that's where.
But, yeah.
Like you said, the Carlson property's way over.
Right.
Because they're only eight feet from the.
But their property actually faces east, does that make a difference?
It's still a corner lot.
You have two sides that are twenty-five, right, and twenty-five.
Sightlines for that reason.
But if you look at both of those houses, they're closer to street two on the other side, I'll have one too, I don't know, but, but they're there.
They were there before, before this game ended.
And there's a lot of places, you go to Premgar from the south, those two blocks that are built in as a Ling Edition, they have real short front yards, they just squeeze themselves in, and that's the way they plotted that lot out, that property out.
That are, they, at one time, they probably had a gravel road through there, like, down there on Wood Street or whatever, you know, just.
Yep.
Yep.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve brassers.
I'll second it.
Building permit.
As presented.
As presented by Mike, yes.
Alright, Jean's made the motion and Jay has made the second to allow the braster building permit to continue as approved. Do we have any further discussion on that situation? Anyone need to verbalize anything before I call for a vote?
Just, I just wanna say, I don't have a problem with it either, be prepared to have other things like this come to the council.
And that's fine, we, we can't be.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough one, but I keep looking back at, you know, the houses next to him are, you know, one's almost on the street, one's right there, you know, so. You know, I don't think he's coming out that far, you know, it's not like he's coming to the.
No.
And if we, and if we.
Now, he's kinda being further back from those.
Yeah, and, and if we go with Mason's, he's actually way over, but, but we don't know where the lot line is on that. That's, that's a gravel road, you don't know where.
And this won't be the first time, and this won't be the last time.
Right.
Just be prepared to defend, that's what, go ahead and make your decision, okay?
Gotcha.
A motion by Jean, a second by Jay to allow brassers permit to extend the garage as approved previously to allow further construction. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. You're all ayes, motion carried. Comment allowed, thank you, Mike, for explaining that to us. Yes.
I would like to kind of look at Maple Street apartment lots, because Sandy had made a comment to me once after we looked at it, because you're really restricted with the twenty-five foot front yard and backyard there to what you, you know, she made a comment, we might have to make an adjustment on our easements on that property, and to sell it, that would be. I'd be really disappointed if you turn around and tell somebody to buy both lots and combine them again. When I made you an offer on both lots, it would've, there'd have been one house there already, and another one going to Fisher. But it would've been in near, arguing the distances to the front and back.
This is tight, that's what you're saying, it would be.
You wouldn't have any backyard, would you?
Well, by rights, you could have a seven foot backyard, if you put your door facing the blacktop and the door facing that one, you could put them within seven foot of the lot line now. On what you consider the side lot then.
So, you'd face the front door to the west?
If you face the front door in that, but it's not gonna be a look looking house.
No.
It's not how I, you know, I played with how you could put, and you can make a house, you can put a simple, there's nothing wrong with a twenty-four, twenty, I shouldn't say twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight foot house, that's what everybody built years ago, but, they're good at the starter homes.
Or someone that doesn't wanna make homes.
Right.
We just need homes. I go, what do you know? Homes that are full of stuff, that are full of people are good, stuff not so good.
But it'd be lots where you might wanna make some adjustments.
On Mason's, I feel like I'm gonna make the motion that we approve his, but change it to twelve feet instead of fourteen feet, since he's been waiting a while.
Well, he never, he doesn't ask for twelve though.
No, he's always asking.
He's asking for fourteen.
But we would be, we would prove it if he would go to twelve.
What, what if he does, you gotta find out if he wants twelve or not.
Yeah, is that even, is that even?
Well, I guess you could give him, that would be his option.
This is your alternative.
This is your alternative, you go to twelve feet or you.
That's what Lexi's offering.
That's what I'm offering.
There you go.
Well, if you were nothing, well, they already delivered letters to all the zoning guys for, for meetings, so.
We have this one tonight to make that call up.
I think he said, I think he said that the zoning.
I would, you know, present that to all, to them and see if they would want it.
I mean, if he didn't want the twelve, then he can go to the board of adjustments.
And receive the board of adjustments.
That's my, that's my thing.
I, I guess, I don't know.
Give him another day tomorrow to respond or what?
Yep, and then if he doesn't like that, then he can keep going in the board of adjustments and they make a decision.
So, you've already got letters on it?
So, that's my.
Yes.
Rocked it out tomorrow.
Because they are.
But if they were to agree to that, then it would be important.
Right.
I mean, I can say one time that that made a lot of sense, and that was the Chacey store, and they made adjustments to what their plan was, they were gonna.
They made adjustments?
They were gonna set all these coolers next to the alley, and there were arguments with that, so they quickly redesigned the building to conform to what would work, so that was a case where it worked out.
Okay, Lexi's made the motion to allow the waterman to make a twelve foot deck, which, twelve foot deck.
Oh, that guy's gonna take off.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
A twelve foot deck, which is a slight continuance into nonconformance at this time, do we have support for that motion?
I will second that.
Second by Jean. Is there any further discussion, we had a motion by Lexi and a second by Jean to allow a twelve foot deck instead of a fourteen foot deck.
Yeah, I, I still think you're, you're not, if, he should be here, he should explain himself, just like Mike did and all that, he, they knew that this was all coming and.
I didn't insist that they come.
Well, I know.
I thought they were asking to go to board of adjustment, and I just wanted.
Well, they, they, they know they're going to board of adjustment, they, that's, yeah, that's the whole thing.
Well, so she was on for the say.
So, we had to send back to Kevin Braster, but we made an exception for him too.
Yeah, but, but Kevin, but Kevin had a representative here.
I did not insist that they, I told, I told them.
No, I, I didn't say they had to be here.
I know, but I'm just saying, now you're punishing it for not being here.
No, no, I'm not punishing them, I'm just saying, we're, we're coming up and we're just saying, well, you know, okay, if we offer the twelve, but, you know, it's.
I'm just offering that so they don't have to wait till June fifth for our next meeting, because they wanna get going, like, and I totally get it, like, they've already waited a month, like. So, that's what my option is, they don't like the twelve feet that we give them, then they can proceed with the board of adjustments, then, whatever the board adjustment comes, then it's gonna come back to us anyways. So, that's why I'm just like, right, so it's like, might as well try to skip one step and don't have to have this at a meeting, so that's why I made this offer, and this proposal.
I didn't, I didn't see a drawing.
He had a drawing on the first one, this is the second one.
And so, how, so, so my question is, the eight foot porch, how, was that not a conforming?
No, that was already there, it's there, so it's already nonconforming, you're allowed to rebuild your existing nonconformance, but anytime you extend further nonconformance, that's the issue. So, he's asking for six more feet, and Lexi's saying we'll give you four more feet.
Yeah, I get all that, I just wondered if the eight feet still was nonconforming.
The middle of his house is like nonperformance, so it's really unfortunate.
His whole house.
He has a great backyard, but his whole house is built to the east.
Too close to the street.
Yeah.
Which then, it probably didn't have a street so much back then.
He was probably a horse.
Nineteen forty-six.
He was probably a horse in carriage.
What did they say, nineteen forty-six? Yeah, built nineteen forty-six, was the house.
Howard Crowe's plot.
So, yes, and the, an eight foot porch isn't large, but on the front of a house.
Probably one of them horse aids, we tied them up.
On the front of a house, it would be a good size, and if we, if they, um, you know, went, if we offered them the eight foot, and then that would give us some lea, you know, some leeway there.
Four more foot, I think maybe they would make, maybe that would be a good compromise.
Yeah.
So, that's why you said, put a proposal up there. Yeah, because I think.
I mean, they were talking about sightlines before with, uh, what's his faces, brassers?
Yeah.
You look at the sightline there, it's same problem, you can look down and, um, Lundquist and the other one are sticking out probably as far as his deck is gonna be sitting out.
Isn't there, isn't there, isn't there a house just north of, I mean, south of his, that was almost on the street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One with the red roof, and then Lundquist is about just as far out as. So, you, so twelve feet, you wouldn't notice, you probably wouldn't notice that on the sightline.
Probably not.
So, I think they would take the twelve feet instead of going, have to come, this all come back to us if we compromise, do four more feet, and see what they take, if they don't like it, then they can go to the board of adjustments.
I would say, two feet less, they would should be, they would definitely not take it.
Right.
Happy with that, but.
Because to me, a fourteen, a twelve foot deck is pretty good size.
So, this is, I feel like a good compromise.
Figure mine.
And the height is.
Say, I don't even know what mine is.
The height would be?
Twelve, maybe?
The height is just going up to the twenty inches, so they're not asking it to go six feet and cover it, they're keeping it pretty low, twelve foot is the required.
Yeah, it's twenty foot wide, so.
They just want metal.
The height doesn't comply.
Nope, it would be also a problem.
No, okay.
Height is what makes it a deck, otherwise they can do a patio without asking you for anything, and your patio is only, but because they're putting more than a twelve foot high.
So, it's only gonna be fourteen inches high, right, is that what you're saying?
Twenty inches, right, from the ground.
So, is that what, two steps?
I thought it had to be thirty some inches to.
And then it has to have a railing.
Rail, it's gotta have a railing if it's.
Is that what it says?
Like thirty.
If it becomes a deck, that's a different.
Yeah, because isn't it like thirty some inches?
I'm turning on put a railing.
It's got a railing.
Deck higher, decks higher than twelve inches, shop apply was required, setbacks, steps, driveways, it does not talk about that.
But most decks have a railing, I wouldn't know who would want a deck without a railing.
There's one out there by the church that's had one for five, six years.
Just kinda that map, they don't have no steps, it's all, and I know they'll be railing.
She doesn't have a railing? She just got stuck around there.
Yep.
I just, that's what I was trying to clarify, if our ordinance had to have a railing at a certain height, or, or no.
Yeah, there's people that don't have railing on their decks and they don't hear.
It's not required. Rally is not required, no, here.
I thought it had to be if it was somebody like thirty inches high.
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
Is that how she got around that, by putting steps all the way around that thing?
Steps cannot, they have distances for that, either steps may include a horizontal landing, not for driving, see that speed.
Andrew?
Yeah, does hers have like steps all the way?
Might've been before, yeah.
Hers has steps, but I don't see no railing.
She didn't have a railing.
Andrew, her, I don't see a railing on hers, but.
No, she said it.
Great, so you don't need a railing.
An open unenclosed porch or deck structure may not project in the front yard, again, those same things we're discussing, within ten feet, uh, doesn't really say regarding height of the deck. I can see.
I wouldn't want a railing, because it's funny, you get drunk and you fall off, that's, I got my answer, thank you.
Try to look. Alright, and there's like also the fencing, which is kind of different. Okay, back to then the motion and the second, we had a discussion. So, are we ready to call for a vote, all in favor of allowing the waterman extent deck to project twelve feet from their house, say aye.
Aye.
It's very quiet, and opposed, say nay.
Nay.
It's just, you're the only one that said, Jean, you were a nay, I mean, an aye?
Yes, I'll be a second.
Yeah, oh, necessarily mean, but yes, then go ahead.
What was the decision on the railing?
There's, doesn't.
We have no requirement, no requirement.
Okay, that means motion carries, they, should they, this is to offer their.
See, this is the argument, if they don't like this offer, then they can go to the board of adjustments, and I guess we'll do it, they would come back around with us.
Okay, I think that covers it, and then the question is, how do you want to proceed with these building permits in the future, there, that was the other question, kind of broad at the beginning, we do not want to.
I would say you shouldn't be spending money to have some else or do it.
I guess, to me, it should be, I mean, somewhat more simple.
Is it something, is it something that after four thirty, Kelly, would you go around in the city vehicle if they need one and go measure?
Well, he can do it during work.
I mean, if you are not busy versus work, right.
Yeah, I mean, the only problem I have, I mean, that's fine, and we used to do that, but sometimes we cannot find lot pins and stuff like that.
So, it takes a while.
See, that's where we're getting to the point where, that the homeowner by permit has to know where their, their lot line is, and then, and people don't like that, because like you said, Steve, what is it, thirty-five hundred dollars?
No, no, it didn't cost me that much.
Oh, really, somebody told me that they had cost them.
It cost me about seven hundred dollars.
Oh, that's, yeah.
For two of them or one of them? For two of them, it was five hundred, it was three hundred the first time, and it was five hundred the second.
Now, what if they did it on my lot, do they have to go clear to Casey's and like that and start?
So, when they did mine, they measured from Casey's corner, because there's a marker there, and then there's a marker on the corner of Day, Day Street and Maple. There's a marker in the road there, and they're not necessarily in the center of the road, if you would draw a line from those two markers, the center of the road is off about a foot.
Well, how would they keep that marker in place when they replace this, have they replaced?
They resurvey, they, they survey all that stuff, they, they log it into their GTS, and then they go and put it back in where it belongs.
I, I don't know, I don't know if you or Kevin found my two, I have two pins in my front yard.
And see, it might've been me.
Yeah.
Those are the, the pins that you can draw a straight line down Maple Street, and then you can measure off of Maple Street to the east, and then you can measure off of that pin going north and south.
Did they, when they put those telephone and cable boxes in originally, do you think they put them on the lot pins, because it seems like.
I think they, that was your goal, yes, to try to, yes.
Yeah, because I was gonna say, that, it seems like when I looked on mine, the two telephone boxes are right in the backyard.
But.
I also, I crooked them too.
To be a hundred percent sure, they need to get that, I think they need to get there, that's my opinion. Um, like, are, are Harker and Green Edition, more than likely a hundred years ago, it was measured out with a rope with knots in it.
You sure they just didn't eye it?
Yeah, didn't they eyeball it maybe, eyeball it?
I, I know, I know a guy that owns land outside of town, and they're off, you know, fifteen, twelve feet on corners and that, you know, because they used to take, like you said, a stick and a piece of rope.
And so, like, like on a survey, it'll say, this lot is lot size this more or less. And so, they're, they're, that covers farm, farm ground, so more or less, is how they get around that. But, um, the town surveys, yes, I think, my personal opinion, I think people need to get, if they're gonna build something, they need to get their lot surveyed.
These old camp lots. These old camp lots and he's saying that, what does he have from that street, that twenty-five feet frontage, he has, they have to add for that house?
Both two on the corner, that would be twenty-five on both sides.
Twenty-five.
Till the corner, yeah.
So you only got a seven-foot backyard with that twenty-five foot.
If you put that, yeah, the same, unless you put the door.
And that's on that one, right, that we cleaned up.
How it was basically, yeah.
Yeah, they would be great.
Yeah, grass looks a lot better now, it do.
I mean, there's quite a bit of grass there in between there.
Yeah, well, this isn't true, because that garage is in that, what, two feet into that property.
And see, that's all in the Harker Green Edition, that's messed up.
Where's the Harker Green Edition over there?
By where I live.
Yeah, east of Maple Street and from Broadway to Day Street.
Well, since you brought that up, did you ever, when I asked you about that sign of the no parking? On that, from your-
No parking goes from Maple Street to Main Street on that road.
Well, there, I told you, so we need to put two signs up, because people-
But that has to, you, that has to-
Because there's one on your house, but on the other, on the opposite side, there's no parking and it is, if people are parking on both sides, cause there's no sign that says no parking. You, I can't even get my vehicles, or vehicles are parked.
That needs to be a resolution, it just can't be me go putting signs in.
So we gotta put that on the next day.
So you guys gotta put that on the agenda and go through the channels to get that done.
Is it actually ordinance?
Huh?
I think it's an ordinance.
Yeah, ordinance, yeah.
Okay, so we need to put that on June fifth meeting.
So where are they parking?
So you know where, what, what, off of Maple, what is that? Street.
Road, right.
Mine's back.
Screw's back.
Crossback, okay, and then you turn into Harker.
Okay.
Okay, you, Pete, you, people are parking on both sides of the streets. And when you go look down the street from like where Brenda lives, that whole street, there should be no parking.
That's always been a problem.
And so-
They don't always park on both sides.
So when I turn, when I turn to go there, sometimes there's people parking on both lots, so then I have to back up all the way on the Maple Street, because I can't get down.
There's, cause they're on both sides.
They're both, so we need to-
So it's like my Boos and Putter Bombs and those?
Yes, so you, we need to decide which side we're gonna have.
And the Amsons.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're gonna do it, you should just keep the same side of the road.
Right, no parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, I agree with that. Well, I know Boos complained about, somebody always parking in front of theirs.
Right.
It's not even, they don't park on their side.
Really, before we bring this in, Avon, find out, we should look at any other issues with those same situations and make the whole modification.
Is that street narrow?
Yes.
It looks like it, it's not super big.
It is now.
It's very narrow.
I was gonna say, I've always had a problem with it now.
I can barely get a suburban through it.
They've always parked, everybody's always parked.
When they're all, when both people, and I sure have to be trying to back up on a Maple Street. You know what I mean, to turn around, like, I should, yo, so we need to decide on that the next payment.
Do you have a agenda for next meeting?
Five.
Okay.
We have first reading of it, I guess, we'll have to see if there are any other spots that we can make of them while you're driving around or-
Do we have to ask the neighbors what they think or?
No.
No, I don't think so.
No.
I think it all gets-
That will be the public notice and the-
Public notice, and then they can come in and complain if they want to.
They can come in.
You can decide to change that based on their response, but, okay. Uh, I did not put council comments, but we already have made several and there's no public here to address the council, so unless you have more comments, we will call for an adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'm second. The motion by Jean, a second by Carol.
Hey.
Any discussion, otherwise, someone in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're not all ayes, we adjourn seven oh three PM, say nay. Thank you.